Yeah, for sure.
She'll just know it's there.
Aiden, this was a good idea. Thank you for finding us here.
You're welcome.
Thank you, kind sir.
Oh my gosh. Yeah.
Yeah, all these baskets were.
These, I can't believe in the same collection.
No, there isn't really.
If you have a box, that's okay.
That is cool.
I don't like that one.
There's a big move there too.
What's wrapped around?
I'm not sure that's it. That one looks better. The other one, I'm not sure. What kind basket was this?
Ou-nan.
Ou-nan?
Ou-nan.
How do you spell that?
W. O-U-N-A-N, I think. W-O-U.
Ou-nan. W.
O-U-N-A-N, I believe. Pennsylvania. Made out of homely. Like they're on hobbies, I think. They're very fine. I'm gonna look it up. So. Okay, it's W-O-U-N-A-A-N. O-U-N-A-A-N. Yeah, they're pretty baskets. Really pretty.
Hi, Mike. Hi, Mike.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. Living it up. Living it up here on.
Larry is here as well.
Yep, there's Larry.
Give it a couple more seconds for, uh, for Sadi and Rolf.
You bet. Did we send a Bar Sadi or Rolf a reminder or anything?
Um. I didn't. Do you wanna, you wanna? I got Rolf, you wanna?
You're gonna do Rolf?
Yeah.
I'll do Bar Sadi and see. I guess we got a quorum though anyway, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Larry, how are you?
Good.
Good.
Good. There's Mike.
Oh, Rolf is here too. And Bar Sadi.
Oh, good, good.
Everybody's here.
Everybody, the whole gang.
The band is back together.
Great.
All right, let's see if, uh, Elena is here and if she's ready.
I'm ready.
All right. Hi, good to see you. All right, this is the Metropolitan District Meeting, uh, April ten. It is three thirty-two. Um, we're ready. Elena, would you do the roll call for us, please?
Secretary Michael, Michael Bar Sadi.
Yeah.
Treasurer Rolf Jacobson.
Here.
Director Larry Fox.
Here.
Director Michael Graham.
Here.
And Chairman Shemi Shlomo.
I'm here. All right, everyone is here. Um, go forward with the approval of the agenda. Anyone wanna make a motion?
Oh, I'd, I'd make a motion that we approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That will be five to zero. Um, all right, the consent calendar, uh, let's see what we got here. We have January ten and February fourteen minutes that needs to be approved. Um. Let me see real quick who was here and who wasn't, so we're not making a mess. Okay, on January ten. It was only Bar Sadi that wasn't there, so anybody but Bar Sadi can make a motion.
Make a motion with true, with the, uh, minutes of January tenth as written.
Is there a second?
Second, I'll second.
Thanks, Russell. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, any opposed? That would be just, uh, four to zero without Bar Sadi. Um. The same thing for February. Um, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda or to approve the minutes from, uh, February fourteen meeting. Is there a second?
Second, I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, that would be four to zero again. Um. Okey-dokey. Uh, reports, parking report, is James with us? Or Juan? Let me check the participants here.
I saw Juan today, he said. He reminded me of the meeting.
He was here a minute ago.
Yeah, he was here a minute ago. Uh, here's James, though. So. We'll give him, we'll give him a minute here. Hi, James.
You guys, you guys hear me okay? Yes.
I can hear you.
I'm not sure what was going on. Hey, Juan. Yes, I, I had to reset by Zoom, so I'm, I'm in now. I, I ain't going to be, yes. All right. All right. Sorry about that. Um. No worries. So, parking report, um, did anybody have questions about the financial reports that were provided? The revenue reports? Um, I didn't have any. Um, and I did update the, the chart, um, from last week, cause it was set up weird. Like part of it was just citation revenue and part of it was everything. Um, so I did fix it, so the full chart for both last year and this year is showing all revenue.
Um. Thank you for doing that, James.
Yeah, yeah, not a problem. Um, and so if you guys have questions on that, um, the only thing that I wanted to provide info on is we did do an inventory on lighting in the parking lots. Um, and there were a couple lights, uh, that were noted as being out um, in the Wichita Smithy lot. Um, I did, uh, shoot you an email, send me, um, to the, the Flying Eagle email address, uh, a little while back. I don't know if you saw it, but, uh.
I, I did, I did. I saw it. Thank you so much.
Okay, good. Um.
The only thing is I do have a question on that. I wasn't sure if it's Colorado Springs Utilities or if it's the city, uh, that actually, I know the city has like a little boom truck that kinda goes up that, that height. Um, I wasn't sure if it's gonna be taken care of by the city or not, James. Do you know?
Um, I, to be honest, I don't know. Um, uh, I would assume, uh, uh, the. Metro would take care of those, but, um, I can get with Juan and, and see if we can't figure out who needs to, to address that.
Yeah, uh, Sh- Shemi, uh, Marcus Electric is the one that's, uh, taking care of those for the lot, for our lots.
Okay, does he have a boom truck to go up that high? Or are you guys to find the boom truck?
Yeah, no, he, he has one.
Okay, cool. Thank you. I'll, I'll contact Marcus. I appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, Juan, since you are here, did, did you hear anything from Denise about those, uh, those, uh, the grant for the lighting?
Um, nothing yet, but I can follow up and, um, reach back out to you.
That would be awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, any questions for James on the parking report?
Uh, yeah, James, on, uh, the citations. When you, when you talk about the citations there and the fines, is that the fines collected or just the fines levied?
Uh, so, uh, there's, I'm assuming you're looking at the, the summary.
Yes.
Um, so there's two different sections. Um, so we have the, the citation revenue collected. Um, that's, that's kind of what we collected in off, in, in the office. So if people that came in to, to pay their tickets, that's gonna be that total there. Um, and then, uh, under the just issued citation information, that's just purely the, the value of the citations that were issued, uh, during the month of March. That does not reflect what was collected out of that.
Okay, so that, that's why the difference in the numbers there.
Yes, so we, we issue a lot and we, we typically, uh, only collect a portion of that each month. And, and that's just depending on, uh, how many people are, are either coming to us to pay those tickets or how many people are paying the tickets on.
Okay. So, the summary, the summary is then, is, is, is the, is what you collected.
Uh, so there's, there's the citation revenue collected in office. That's what we collected both from our office and through our website. Um, so that's everything that we collected that was issued in the Wichita lot.
So the Wichita lot, the Wichita lot, then, just so I'm reading this right, the Wichita lot, everything you issued was paid that month, huh?
Uh, no, I don't think so there.
No, so we, we issued in the Wichita lot, um, we issued five hundred and five dollars. Uh, I'm sorry, I'm gonna cut the wrong, uh, uh, so we issued two, two thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars in citations. Um, but we collected three hundred and forty-five dollars.
Okay, that's where I'm confused.
Okay.
Where's the, where's the three hundred and forty-five that you collected?
So, under transactions and revenue summary on the left, there's a, there's a field that the citation revenue collected and then it has in office and abbreviate, uh, in, uh, parentheses. Um, if you just go down to Wichita lot, you'll see that total.
Oh, oh, okay. I guess what I was confused about was, uh, that one plus the, that's on page nine that you did, and then on page ten, you had another summary, which didn't match the ones from page ten. Uh, so that's why I was confused.
And there, there may be a discrepancy, um, just because we, we do run these numbers at, at different times. Um, so, so sometimes there is a discrepancy from the reports, the summaries that I get and when I go through and run this report separately. Uh, so Becky's generally the one that, that does prepare these reports. Um, so, uh, oftentimes there is a, a discrepancy as far as when these reports are actually run.
Okay, what, uh, what's your, uh, what, what do you do, you know, I mean, that's, you know, collecting ten percent or twenty percent of what, uh, ten percent really of the, what the, almost fifteen percent of what the citations were. What do you do in the follow-up of, of this? How do you, how do you handle that?
Uh, so after the citations are issued, um, uh, more or less, we, we have a thirty-day period, um, that, that we give folks to, to pay that citation. After the thirty days, there is a ten-dollar late fee that's applied. Um, and then I think right now, after sixty days, uh, we are pushing the accounts to, uh, the, the collection agency that we're working.
The collection agencies, uh, what is, what is their success rate?
Uh, so, um, let me, that is a good question. I don't have the numbers pulled up immediately. Um. I just was running these today, uh. So for the month of March, uh, the amount that we have, we have collected through the agency is twenty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars.
Uh, I mean, the collection agency gets the percentage of that or?
So they apply a, a fee on top of it, so they, they just collect that fee. They don't take anything from our revenue.
Well, they collected twenty-four thousand and that, what period was that? Just for the month of March?
That was just for the month of March, so they're, they are quite efficient.
Oh. Okay. All right. Okay.
Any other questions for James?
Thank you.
Okay, no more questions. Thank you, James. We appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
Wait, wait, let me back up. The, the question they did, they collected twenty-four thousand. That was for everybody in the town or was that just for?
So that's, uh, I don't really have a, a good way of, of separating that out. Um, so that is just for everything in Manitou. Um, but, I mean, what we collect, uh, in the office, um, was, let's see. Uh, looks like around twenty-six thousand is what we collect in the office, so they're, they're basically matching, uh, almost matching. They're a little bit under what we get, but, uh.
What I was curious about is what applied to us as opposed to the.
Yeah, unfortunately, I, I don't have a good way of, of, of pulling that data, um, at the moment.
Okay.
I can look into it and if I can figure something out, I'll, uh, I'll try to provide that.
I, I, I would be curious about it, yeah.
Sure, I'll, I'll, I'll see what I can do.
Not curious, I, I would like to know.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look into that and, and, uh, I'll provide it on the next report if I can.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Any other questions? All right, thank you, James. I appreciate it. Uh, finance report, if Nicole is with us. Hi, Nicole. Is it Nicole? I don't hear anything.
I guess I can't hear.
I just heard a little bit.
Yeah, just here in the background. Let's, let's give her a couple more seconds. You can probably hear us. She's just.
I'm almost shouting.
Oh, okay, now we can hear you.
Okay, I'll just talk really loud. Um, so the only noticeable, I just pulled up the report, can you see that or just March?
Yes.
Okay, so the only big thing that we know about is the closing and that was a, a big expense. Other than that, we haven't had any, anything of note to point out. I do, but to let you know that the second audit was accepted by, by the state and so was the Conservation Trust Fund report that Becca provided.
Uh, can you repeat it again, Nicole? I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said the state accepted the exception from audit and
Okay.
the Conservation Trust Fund report that was provided by Becca. Very easy this year. We didn't spend any for twenty twenty-three.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the update. Um, I need to update you something. I need to come to the office and just give you, I just got the closing documents, um, and I have the exact amount for the monthly payment for, uh, the loan. Um, I don't know if you have it or not.
Need the schedule. I'll need all of the documentation so that I can provide that to the auditor. Thanks, Jimmy.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll, I'll try and stop by tomorrow if you're around.
I won't be there tomorrow. I'll be there Friday or here Friday.
I'll see you Friday.
What is, uh, Shemi, what is our monthly payment?
Um. Give me about, uh, thirty seconds. And I'll tell you. Our monthly payment is, uh, forty-four ninety-four fourteen, so almost forty-five hundred dollars.
Hey, and then the balance of that is the three hundred forty-three thousand-ish, right?
Uh, again, go ahead and ask again, Rolf.
So the, 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 the loan is for about three hundred forty-three thousand?
The loan is for five hundred thousand.
Five hundred?
Yes, we down, we put a down payment of three hundred and, uh, that's the amount for the down payment, if I'm not mistaken, for the closing cost.
Okay, so. Okay, so we paid, what we paid at closing was three hundred forty-three thousand?
Uh, yes, three hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-one cents is what we, uh. Is, uh, the, the, the check that we gave. Yep.
Okay, great, okay. I was just saying, I thought maybe that was the loan because it was, okay, understood. Well, great.
Yeah, the seller financing is, uh, five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Okay, um. Any questions on the finance report for Nicole?
I move, we accept the finance report.
Uh, and parking report, if you, if you may, you might as well.
And parking report.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
That was Barzati. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Any opposed? That will be five to zero. Um, thank you, Nicole. Um, okay, next, uh, is just, uh, old business update on the Ute Cast Motel. As, uh, everyone know, uh, we closed on the property. Um, so, couple issues already, be honest with you. A couple days after we closed, I went there, um, and there is kinda people, squatters already on the property. Um, this was an issue from before, uh, my heads, before closing, I had Roy, uh, email me and asking. Uh, when we're gonna close. Um, so, I believe so, they don't, they don't, uh, have that problem on their hands. Uh, the problem is kinda on our hands now. Um, and I think if you ask me, we should, uh, we should definitely do something for it. We're not, we don't want. Anybody in there, starting a, you know, a small fire and catching the whole place on fire. I think we should, uh, fence it. Um, that way, they need to, you know, they really need to take some effort to go in there. Um. Uh, so I kinda need your opinion on that. Um, another update I have is, I did get another quote for demo. Um, the second quote for the demo was a lot higher than the first company. Um, the first company was, uh, D2 Demo. Um, they've been working all around, uh, all over. They've been working in Manitou, I believe they're, um. Working on the library expansion, I believe they are, um, at the Dillon Hotel. Um, I know for a fact they are in multiple places in Colorado Springs as well, um, very. Recommended company. I met Kevin, uh, that's, uh, Kevin Murphy, uh, the son of Chuck Murphy, uh, which most of us know. Um, great guy, um, his bid was the better one from everyone else so far. Um, and also they work hand in hand with, uh, the asbestos company, um, that gave us the best, uh, bid. I, I think we should probably go forward with, uh, D2 Demo. Um, again, I need your opinion. Um, I did ask Kevin, um, to, I think his first bid was around a hundred and sixty thousand. Um, I did ask him to lower the price. And he sharpened his pen, pencil, and, uh, he came up with a little better price. But at the same time, when we were there and I saw that people are on the property. Um, I already asked him for a new bid that will cover, um, some fencing. And some, um. You know, covering for the windows, basically boarding the place up, so we don't have any kind of problem until we get. To the demolition, uh, itself. Um, so he did give it to me out, uh, he just gave it to me yesterday, last night. I'm sorry, I didn't have time to forward it to you guys, but I will today. Um, and the last update on that is that I went to the planning department today for a pre-application meeting. Um, to, to, to try and get the demo, uh, permits, um. This process is going to take a long time, you guys, um. You know me, I like to go forward and, and do stuff quickly. I was hoping we can do something for this summer. Um, so we can, you know, have more parking for residents, parking for, um, uh, business owners, parking for visitors. Uh, but the more I heard today from the planning department, um.
Appreciate you, thank you.
I'll be honest, I'm, I'll, I'll be happy if we're done next summer. Um, I might be exaggerating, but, um, it's, it's just gonna take a long, a long way. Uh, we're supposed to go in front of the HPC, the Historic, uh, Committee, and, um, that takes about two or three months. Um, uh, they will need some, uh, economic hardship, they need the structural integrity, they need, uh, a plan for the actual parking. Um, so this is gonna take a while, um, and there, and therefore that's why I wanna make sure that. The property is protected and not just, um, you know, open to whoever to do whatever they want over there. Um. Any questions?
Well, a lot of di- different things. So first thing is the, uh, fencing. Let's talk about that and get that off the table then, or is that part of the bid? So you think we would, that would just be part of hiring D2? They would do the fencing also?
Why, absolutely, yeah. The day I met him there and we already had that issue over there, I basically. To be honest, specifically, I saw someone, someone there the night before because I'm walking, um, and while I was walking, I already saw that someone is there. The night before, so the day in the morning, I, I kinda, we, we spoke loud, uh, intentionally outside. Because I knew someone will get out of there. Uh, I knew someone is there and I wanted to make a lot of noise. I didn't wanna go to the door and open it and risk, uh, either Kevin or myself. Um, so, uh, we made a lot of noise, uh, so they know that someone is there. Um, someone did get out, uh, I spoke, I spoke to her. And I asked her to tell everyone that used to, you know, just stay there. Um, to tell everyone that this property, you know, it's, 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 um, it changed hands, there was a sale. And they can no longer be there. Um, um, so, uh, I did let them know about that. Um, but it, you know, when it's called outside and you know, you have a kind of a place, you can just. Bust the door and go in, they, they would do that, no, no question asked. Um, so, um. Let me see if I can find. The amount for the. So to fence it, it's about thirty-five hundred dollars, um, and to board up the windows and doors is about five thousand, so eighty-five hundred dollars. Um. That, that was the cost for that. Um, the original, the original, uh, cost of the whole thing was a hundred and sixty, almost a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. Um, after he worked on it a little bit, uh, he gave me the new bid at a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Uh, but it includes already, um, the, 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 the board up the windows and doors. And the, uh, temporary fence. Um, and I will send you guys, I, I apologize for not having time to send it. I just, I just saw it today, uh, he sent it last night.
So I'll let other people talk then, but I think that, yeah, wrapping the fence in with our demolition team is probably a good idea. And it is, so that's a great thing. I agree with you that, um, we should. Hire them as quickly as we can to get them locked in on that price. Um, so I'm all for the D2. Um, for fencing immediately, having D2 do the fencing. I don't think we need to board up the houses though, I don't, until somebody actually does that, so I, I, that's one expense that I don't think we need to do, but it could be run, so.
Okay, anybody else had some thoughts? Thank you, thank you, Ralph.
How mu- how much was Kevin's total now?
Uh, Kevin's total, uh, the old bid or the new one with everything?
The new one with everything.
Hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-three, twenty-three cents.
Yeah, so we got a, we got a big discount off the fencing. Just because you asked, so that's pretty lucky.
Uh, to, to be honest, I asked because, um. I don't know how to say it, but, uh, I wanted Kevin to do this, um, you know, part of it is because he's all over the place, well-known. Um, as his father, um, also it's because they work hand in hand with, um. Um, um, I think it was Paramount, which was, which gave us the, the really good bid for the asbestos mitigation. So all in all, I really wanted them to do the work. Um, and I, I just asked because, uh, my excuse was I really, I, I wanna take it to the board today. And, you know, that way I kinda, I persuaded him to, you know, give us a little bit of a discount. So I can, I can present it to you guys today, um, and, and make the decision a little bit easier. Um, and, and, and I hope I succeeded.
Well, I agree with you and I agree with Ralph that I think we're gonna end up with Kevin Murphy. Uh, even if you, I don't know if you've got a third bid on its way or not, but. I think we'll probably end up with Kevin and we probably need to secure that place and. Maybe we can ask the police to check on the property because that would give them an excuse maybe to identify some of the people. And seems like the, over where we live, the way they are getting squatters out of houses. Is when the police finally go in and identify the people, well, a lot of them have warrants. So that's kinda the quick way of removing somebody from a house as if they already have a, if they're wanted for something else. So I like your idea. I mean, and I agree with you and Ralph that seems pretty good, but I guess I wanna hear what Mike and Larry have to say.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
You bet.
I agree with, um, Mike and Ralph.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, oh, I, absolutely. I, I guess the disparaging thing is, is the length of time this is gonna take. Uh, and it seems to me from, from what you said, and having, considering that we have dealt with the city. And previous projects, the city has never attempted to fast-track anything we've attempted to do. If anything, they've drug their feet. And so I think, uh, the first thing we need to do is really secure the property. In anticipation of a longer haul, of getting it demolished and a parking lot built. I know we have city people listening in on this, but that's been our history. And our experience.
It's all, it's all true. I don't think you're, uh, lying about anything, Larry, and, and, and to be honest, it's not gonna be any different this time. Uh, there's not, there's not gonna be any favors. Um, I, I left there, um, and, you know. Uh, Erin from the planning department explained everything really, really, as, as good as she can, um, you know, she's doing her job. Um, they're, they're probably, it's probably gonna, it's not only gonna go to HPC for approval, this is gonna be going to city council for approval in the excuse of. Um, historic structural. Now, there is nothing historic to this place, um, but. Any building above fifty years old in Manitou is considered historic. Um, so. That's the situation, this is why it's gonna take a long time, um, so. I guess don't, don't expect it to be done, uh, anytime soon, like I did.
Okay.
So, when we're talking about the project, um, let's always remind everybody that. This is a benefit for residents of Manitou, so let's really push that, cuz it's the truth, we're not lying. This is for residents, this will help out residents, so we're not attracting more cars in here, we're not asking for more congestion. We're not doing anything, so just remember, that's the top thing when anybody asks you about this. This is for residents, this is gonna help out everybody in Manitou. It's gonna help out property values, it's gonna help out renters, um, and that's what, our, our language has to be very careful going forward. And we also have to always say that this has been vacant for years. This has not been actually rentable for many years, and it is, isn't rentable. Uh, because of the, the, the condition of it, so we are not taking away inventory, rentable inventory. So that's also another thing that we always need to mention every time we talk about this project. Helping out the city, not for congestion, not for parking lots, not for taking away housing, this is to help out burnt housing in Manitou. So, be careful.
I agree, and, uh, this is another, you know, part of my, uh. Update is, uh, you know, also, also a request, um, so when this does go to HPC, I would like someone to be there. Uh, with me, my preference will be either Larry, just because of his, uh, knowledge, uh, history. Um, or you, Ralph, um, you know, uh, you, you know. Presenting it by someone else, uh, might be a good idea. Um, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm known for being, you know, not, not, I don't know about aggressive, but I'd like, I do go forward a lot faster, I get frustrated when I don't. Um, and that's, you know, that's, that's a minus for me, so, um, I would like to. Have one of you, uh, present it to HPC and city council, just, just FYI, I will need help with that, just wanted to let you guys know.
Okay, I, I'd be happy to, uh, attend when I'm available, uh, Jimmy.
Okay.
One other thing I wanted to mention is that, uh. When we built the original, uh, Smithney Lot. Uh, and, and this is something to keep in mind, I mean, you know some things that you've learned already from, uh, the planning department, but. We were towards the end of the project, uh, after the building was demolished. And that was on the original Smithney Lot, and we were laying out the number of parking spots, we had laid them out. Uh, and as I recall, we had fifty parking spots, and in the end, and right before. We were given the final go-ahead from, uh, the city, we were blindsided by a group called Fishing is Fun. They wanted access to the back of the lot, so they could keep that area along the creek open for people to fish. Consequently, we lost five parking spaces, ten percent of the lot, to Fishing is Fun. Fishing is Fun, since the Smithney Lot had been built, has done nothing, zero. And yet, we lost ten percent of our parking places to something that we were blindsided by right at the end of the project, and I. Uh, just want us to keep, uh. Keep our eyes open for that to happen again.
But it say that after the flood, it pretty much wiped out all the habitat that they created, just throwing that information in there.
Yes, that's true. Prior to that, Fishing is Fun did nothing. They never even cut down the weeds back there. They did nothing, the, yeah, that wiped out the habitat, but prior to that, they did nothing, they did not use the property, they did not even keep it clean.
I don't think, that's a great thing.
I do know, that's why I'm telling you.
Yeah, it's so true, I remember.
Some of us have been around a while and paid attention to this stuff.
It was crazy, and no one fishes there, right? Good, Larry, and so let's also remember, that's also a, another. Good, Larry. And so let's also remember, that's also another thing that's mentioned to people is that it's gonna increase the access to the stream. The new project, it is going to create a more open area. So that is another thing we need to mention is that, that the creek access will be improved. Flooding risk will be improved. And another area for, I don't know, a weekly a farmer's market or something also. So those are another benefits for this project that we also need to tell people. And anything else that you're gonna think about. So I just wanted to say, let's keep thinking that way.
Okay, to, thank, thank you, everybody. So to sum it all, I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding right. You guys are okay with, you know, when time comes to fence, fence the, the place, if you protect it and if it's protecting is probably part of it is gonna be boarding the windows and doors. I just wanted to make sure that we can go ahead and do that. Also, my next question, just so I know in general, are we happy enough with D two demo bid for a hundred and sixty-three thousand? And telling me you can get the job? That's, that's my next question. And, and, and again, this is not gonna be, this place is not gonna be demolished anytime soon. I just wanna make sure everyone kinda understand it will take months. But because of that, I wanna make sure that it's, it's in a in a condition that nobody can just walk in and out. So.
One question, what was the other bid from the, the second bid for the demo?
It was significantly higher. I can give you the amount. I'm not sure we wanna put the amount out there on public because ju- just for an example, if I put the amount out there, someone else can say, well, or, or, you know, Kevin, for an example, or somebody else would be able to say, well, if those guys went with so much more, I can probably, you know, get more. But it, it was, it was a lot more. I can, I can, I can, how about I'll send you guys? How about I'll send you, I'll, I'll send it to you guys when, when this meeting is over? Or if you want the amount, I can give it to you right now.
No, not if you don't wanna do that. I guess my point was gonna be that, you know, the other, the other one's a lot higher. Do we wanna wait for a third one or do we just wanna get the place fenced?
Okay, if you ask me, I, I would, I wouldn't, I wouldn't wait longer and I'll tell you the reason why. The reason is if we have somebody over there that would start a fire and would catch a building, we're gonna be in so much trouble as far as asbestos mitigation later on that it would cost, it's gonna cost us ten times what the bid for the asbestos mitigation was. Because with a fire, it's gonna be a totally mess. So I don't even wanna get into that situation and that's why adding another, you know, I'd rather spend extra eight thousand dollars to prevent anything from happening than to wait and spend four hundred thousand more to mitigate a problem that we didn't want.
What did, what did the planning department say about, we've gotta hold up the asbestos removal? Till we get all the approval? Is that what they're saying?
Nope, nope, I did. I did not hear that and no, it's just, we, we're gonna go through the process. Erin and Fred, both from the planning department said they will send a checklist today. I haven't seen it yet, but I'm sure they're busy. You know, today or tomorrow, hopefully. And then I'll go by the checklist. We'll see what we have to do, but they, we, we, we didn't even go to that length. I'm only looking at fencing and protecting the property at the moment. I know for a fact it will take a long time for the demo because that's what I've heard at the planning department. You, you can't, you can't demo before it's going to HPC. If you're lucky, you'll be in front of HPC by July. That would be my guess. Same with city council. If we're lucky, it will be July, maybe even, maybe even later. So it's, it's like kind of a domino effect and it's, and it's gonna take, it's gonna take a while.
Do we have to wait for the planning department to let us go in front of HPC?
Yes, you, you, I just, I, I had to make a pre-application meeting. That was today. And now they're gonna send what we need for HPC. So I'll know what they need here in the next probably forty-eight hours. If we don't get it to them, which your chances of, are, are, you know, their requests are gonna be so extensive that there is no way I can get it, give it to them by Tuesday. That means you just wasted another month with HPC. That's part of my frustration. Going and doing the right thing, it just takes a long time in this place. It takes if you're not gonna be on May's HPC meeting and you gotta go in front of them twice, that's what I learned today. I believe that's what Erin was saying. So, you know, and they meet once a month, just like us. So if you're not in front of them and May, you get to June and July and then city council, it, it has to go in front of city council as well because of the historic which I don't agree with, but it doesn't matter what I agree with and what I don't at the moment. I'm just gonna take their, their path. We don't, we don't have much of a choice. So. Yeah. That's, that's where I'm at. I, I thought this could be a little bit quicker and maybe we'll get a little bit of good feedback and, you know, it's not, it's not gonna be the case. It's gonna be like every, everything is gonna be by code. Everything is gonna be by, you know, procedure with the city and it is what it is. It's okay. The good thing is we have the finance, financials for it. We have plenty of time. And we will do the right thing for the town, one way or another. If it's gonna take longer, it will take longer. We're not here for a day or two. We're here for the long run. Period.
Okay, well, I would make a motion that we spend a hundred and sixty-three thousand with the D two for the demolition and the securing the building with plywood and a fence.
All second.
Let me just make sure that we can do that. It's not an, it's not a, it's not on the agenda. Elena?
Right, we need to have that on an agenda before we can actually make a motion. So we can put that on next month if you wanna do that.
You got it. No worries. I just needed kinda to know you guys' view. So I can prepare for it. We can definitely do that from, on the next meeting.
Do we need to do that before, ha- have a special meeting before next month so that we can expedite this? Can we have, can we have that, Elena? Can we do that by email during the month?
Oh, we can't do it by email. We can, you guys can certainly call a special meeting. That's up to you.
Actually, next month, I will not be here on May eighth.
Okay. We can, we can definitely do a special meeting for that.
Actually, I will be leaving on the twenty-eighth and will not be back till the ninth of May.
Murphy say he needs money now to put up the fencing or? Will he do a handshake deal?
I'm sure it can be done. I can, I'm sure I can expedite this. We can, we can just, to be honest, I think we can just put it on the agenda for next month if, you know, we can or, or it's up to you guys. Really, it's up to you. I'm sure I can expedite and I can tell, I can ask Kevin to put the fence up there before. If it's the, if we need, if we need to make a decision on it, I think I, I heard you guys decision about this. So if we wanna make an executive decision, executive section for it, I'm okay with it. If, if we wanna do it on Monday, are you guys available on Monday? This won't take more than three minutes. We can just have an executive meeting on Monday, three o'clock.
I'm good with that.
Or tomorrow, to be honest. I mean, if, if, if everybody's okay tomorrow, three, ah, no, we can do that because Elena needs to post it twenty-four hours before.
You need like three days or something almost, don't you?
It's only twenty-four hours.
Okay. Yeah, I don't care, guys. Any of those days are fine.
Free any day.
Thank you. Okay, we'll, we'll schedule one for Monday, three-thirty in the afternoon. We'll have just that on the agenda. We'll approve it and we're good to go. Okay, any other questions about my update or the building or any other issues, guys? Okay, thank you. Any public comment? I'm not sure if anyone is here.
No.
Okay, all right. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, guys.
Good day, everyone.
Thank you.